All right, I'm kind of pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. We have lots to celebrate this evening. Tenemos mucho que celebrar esta tarde, así que comencemos. Clerk, please kick us off with a roll call.
Counselor Tenary Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Present.
Counselor Cooper. Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Tesh is absent. And Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Santa.
Present.
Counselor Vega. And Counselor Brown.
Present.
Here.
And Counselor Jesus.
Present.
Ten members present. You have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you, Clerk. All right. Before we continue, to my sister Counselor Melinda Vega, welcome back. We're so happy you're back, my love. And so let's move right along to the memoriam and celebratory resolutions. We have certificates this evening.
I make a motion to suspend the rules so that Counselor Garcia can come up to the podium.
All right. Well, you all know that I'm in the business of giving light and attention to those who put in the work for these efforts. And so Sister Counselor Garcia, please join me up in the podium, please.
Okay. Bueno, buena noche a todos. Hi, everyone. For those of you watching at home, today is a super special meeting. We are inviting our students who live in Chelsea but are part of our other high school, which is Northeast Vocational High School. And so tonight, we are celebrating the amazing... Estamos bien contraducciones. Sí, está bien. Bueno, como empecé. Hoy vamos a celebrar todos los estudiantes que están aquí y vamos a nombrar todos los logros de ustedes. Y tenemos bastantes certificados para darte. Pero antes de eso, quisiera llamar a Blanca. I would love to, before I start reading off the certificates and celebrating our students that attend Northeast, I'd love to call Blanca to the stage, to the podium, wherever she is. There you are. Yes, come, come. For those of you who don't know, Blanca is our school rep at the Northeast Vocational School. And she has been such a strong advocate on behalf of all of you in the room. And so, without further ado, Blanca. Right here, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for showing up. This is a time... I've been in the seat for... This is my second year. And I felt it was necessary for the city of Chelsea to begin to acknowledge our Northeast students. You guys are part of us. You guys are part of Chelsea. And I wanted to show appreciation. We have our Student of the Year. We have our soccer team, who the varsity team made CAC. Even if you're not on varsity, I wanted to acknowledge my JV students as well because you are setting the example of what it is to be a student athlete. You have to get up in the morning, do homework, studies, and you still are maintaining your grades. And that's something to be acknowledged. That's something to show your parents that their hard work is worth it. You guys are our future. And you guys are the mentors for kids that are coming after you. So this is a chance to celebrate you today in our city because it is well deserved.
Alrighty, so this is how we're gonna do things tonight. Because there are so many of you, we would love to call you each one by one. And you will line up here. And then after we call everyone, we'll take a group photo. We'll take a quick break so that you all can take pictures with your family. And then we'll go back to our regular agenda. How does that sound? Yes?
Good.
Awesome. So Blanca will start with a few names and then I'll finish off the list. Okay.
I would like to call Adrian Narajo. Is Adrian here? No? Not so good. Okay. These are the two kids that are gonna come today. Okay. Billy Solano. Jaime Valentin. Congrats. Joshua Santiso. Is Joshua here? No. Luis Bermúdez. Mario Pinto. Michael De Paz. Samuel Villanueva. Anthony Hernández. George McKinnon. I just wanna add that George will be... His name will be being placed on the banner for most points throughout his school years. Jeremy Ordóñez. Jesús Martínez. José Santos Junior. Luis Chavak. Luis Martínez. Michael Santos. Samuel Pérez. And last but not least, this young man that I'm going to announce has some accolades that any parent would be proud of. An amazing student. And he... I'm very proud. I just met him. And I'm very proud to announce that Steven Romero is our Student of the Year for Northeast Vocational.
Alrighty. Members of the City Council, please join me on the floor to take a group picture. Okay, before the group picture, before the group picture, sorry. I would love to open it up on the floor, to the floor, to see if any counselors have any remarks they'd like to share. Counselor Robinson. Ay, disculpa. Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to congratulate all you students. It's great that you are here tonight. I'm an avid reader of the Chelsea record. I read about a lot of great stuff. Obviously, we've been taking a great interest in Northeast because of the heavy price that we have to pay. But we are grateful and honored to be with you in the midst of our city hall today and show us what we're paying for. I want to thank your family. I want to thank yourselves because I know it's a lot of dedication. You have to get up. You have to get to that place. And I'm sure sometimes it's quite difficult after doing a lot of studying at night, practicing for sports. It's been great to read about the accolades that you folks are doing up there. And I know some of your colleagues are not here from the school and maybe they're studying or doing other activities. But we are really proud of you, all of you here tonight, and all of you who have received an award. Most importantly, we are proud of you for what you do for your parents and also for the city of Chelsea. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Any other members? Lisa, I mean Counselor Sanigay.
Hello, everyone. I just want to say what a wonderful visit we had to Northeast. They had Chelsea Day for us. So we went and spent the morning where we were served food that had been prepared by the culinary program. When we arrived on the road, there was an announcement on the sign inviting the Chelsea guests to the school. We saw all different facets of the program, and I was so impressed. It was a beautiful day. So I just wanted to thank the administration at Northeast and thank Blanca. And I just wanted to congratulate the students because when we visited, I came away just seeing how hard you work. And I came away with just such an appreciation for all of the trades. And we don't realize how many things we rely on. And what I loved about the day was that all the different departments at the school had actually contributed. So even the little table signs had been done by the graphic design students. And it was just a wonderful, wonderful visit. So thank you again for making us feel so welcome. And congratulations, and I wish you every success.
Thank you, Counselor Sanigay. President Jesus, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. So I will be brief. I echo the words of my colleagues. But I also want to share with our students that we are celebrating today with the parents that we actually have our... Our Senator Sal DiDomenico in the room today. He's actually going to be sharing with us a few words and updates. We always love to have our senator here. But Senator Sal today will also be talking to us about updates on the soccer stadium. And so I'm so glad that he's here to witness some of our great students of Chelsea. And, you know, congratulations, congratulations to all the parents. And yes, I am so excited that we were able to get this together. And I'm really excited that we have Blanca leading in the seat that she's leading in now, bridging our relationship with the students and the faculty over at Northeast. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Can we get a round of applause one more time for our students? Awesome. At this moment, I'd love to ask our counselors to join our students on the floor, our city manager, our Senator Sal, if you can join us too for a group picture. Now, I know that's joining on the floor.
Yeah, some of you probably, I mean, because it's spread out. Yes.
Yeah, go ahead. Alright.
Wait there, hold on.
My fellow counselors, let's start our meeting. Let's get this ball rolling. We're calling the meeting back to order in like 30 seconds. Counselor Jimenez. Counselors, let's return to our seats, please.
I do not miss this seat. I'm a little rusty. Lordy.
Can you suspend the rule? I'm gonna ask someone to suspend the rule. Somebody suspend the rule. So that our city manager can... I mean, our state senator. All right. Calling this meeting back to order. And I will ask one of my colleagues to please suspend the rule so that we can get our senator to give us just brief updates.
Madam President, I make a motion that we suspend a minute of this next order and let our senator, since he's here tonight, to give us an update that we've been patiently waiting on regarding the soccer stadium.
Awesome. Thank you. Senator Sal, thank you so much. We always love to have you in Chelsea. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks to the members of the council and city manager, Fidel Maltese, and members of the public. I just wanted to... I just wanted to, Leo, Councilor Robinson put on the agenda for me to come up and give an overview of the soccer stadium as it stands today and any of the updates that are relevant that have come about since the last time I spoke to you, which wasn't too long ago. But I'll start from the beginning, quickly get to where we are right now with the traffic plans and MBTA plans, then I can answer any questions you might have as well. So as we know, the Revolution Professional Soccer Team is proposing to build a stadium on the waterfront in Everett. And they are, I guess I don't know if you're Evolution. Yeah, I got it, I got it, I got it. And congratulations to all of our students too, by the way. Congratulations to all of our students. So the Revolution are, they're proposing to build a soccer stadium on Everett's waterfront, which currently looks like a place that we would normally do any kind of business. There's a power plant sitting there right now. And the power plant has been decommissioned and it is basically an empty shell. But what is left of the power plant is dirty soil, dirty water on the waterfront. And for years, that power plant has been polluting our air. That cluster or that area of Everett and Charlestown and in Chelsea, the wind blew everywhere, when those smoke stacks were blowing everywhere, is a high cancer rate and high asthma rate in that area because of the heavy industry that has been there polluting our air for so many years. So now we are turning the page on our industrial past on our waterfront. The challenge we had was the power plant where it sits today is in a designated port area. And I mentioned this before, the DPAs are, there's about 10 of them in the entire state. And the DPA as it relates to Chelsea as well starts in Everett where the Alpha Street Bridges runs along that waterfront into Chelsea. It is a very large DPA, one of the largest in the entire state. And to no one's surprise, cities like Chelsea and Everett for years became the place where heavy industry found a home because the residents couldn't fight back. So all of the waterfront property that you see that's contaminated right now has been there for over 100 years, blocking access to that portion of the waterfront to our residents, to the public, and just been a bad, bad business practice that we had to deal with for many, many generations. So through legislation, we lifted a DPA on that piece of land where the power plant is today, where the stadium was proposed to go. The DPA that was lifted is about 8.8% of the entire DPA. So there's a much larger DPA going beyond that. It was very difficult for us to pass legislation to take this out of that designation. It's probably the first time in the history of our state that we were able to do that of any portion of a DPA that will be to benefit the communities at large. And we passed that legislation in November. So that made this area now lifted as a DPA upon the cities of Boston and Everett signing an agreement with the crafts on a community benefits agreement. At that point, DPA will be lifted. There are several deadlines that are upcoming very soon to make that a reality. So May 1st is the first deadline. If there's no agreement in place between the two communities, then it goes to mediation. If that does not get resolved, their mediation, then it goes to arbitration, binding arbitration at the end of the year. And that point, an arbiter will come in and decide in the two parties what is best for the communities. Now, how does Chelsea relate into all this? I know there's a lot of concerns about potential traffic coming through the streets of Chelsea to get to the stadium. And as part of legislation that we passed, we wrote into that law that the MBTA had to put together a plan of how they were going to move 25,000 people from that site to all the access points in the suburbs as well. Because if you looked at the plan, there are only 75 parking spots on that site. And that was by design. So people have varying opinions about that good or bad. There is room to put a 10,000 car garage on that site. But by design, we limited it parking because we know that if you put a garage there with 10,000 car capacity, you will see 10,000 cars plus trying to get into that garage every single game or concert. Standing by parking spots changes people's routine, their mentality about how they're going to find parking there or no parking on that site because there's nowhere to put a car. So we limited parking because we didn't want the traffic nightmare that would be coming to that neighborhood and the surrounding communities like Chelsea when that stadium was in use. So we have heard from folks saying it's not going to work. We have heard from folks saying not enough parking or we don't want traffic. You can't have both. Either you don't want parking if you don't want traffic, but if you want more parking, you will have traffic. That is a guarantee. So to make this work, we have to have a robust transit oriented approach to that corridor. And the MBTA delivered their report to us sometime last couple of weeks. And they have four components to this plan, which is going to alleviate traffic in cities like Chelsea and Somerville and Charlestown and in Everett, of course. So the first thing that we were fighting for that's actually been in the works for quite some time is a commuter rail stop. Encore has, as part of their host agreement with Everett, was paying for a commuter rail stop in the city of Everett. For years, that didn't happen because the MBTA rail, the commuter rail stop behind, the commuter tracks behind Encore were on a slope. The cars that we had several years ago weren't able to accelerate after they came to a complete stop if they had a station behind Encore. So they had to gain momentum from the previous stop, going up the incline and passing Everett altogether with no stop. So we've had rail in Everett for decades with no stop. This commuter rail stop now will be able to go in that area because they have new technology and the train cars now can accelerate up that grade. So there will be a commuter rail stop. And in the MBTA plan, they said that they don't have the funding for it, which is correct. So if anyone reads that, have no fear because Encore is paying for that stop. The second thing is a civil line extension. We all know it ends over in Chelsea where Market Basket is. That extension will be coming down with 99 as well, carrying folks from the North Shore and from Chelsea as well, dropping off very close proximity to the stadium. We also have a footbridge that is being built from the Assembly Row Station on the Orange Line that go into the casino site, which will give access to the stadium as well, a walking bridge. Again, the MBTA put in their report, they are not funding that. That is correct again, so have no fear if you see that. That footbridge is already being paid for by DOT, Department of Transportation Station. That has already been squared away. The funding is there. The design is already implemented. It will be built in 2029, which is right around the time the stadium will be ready to go. So, and the last component is water shuttle service. So there'll be water shuttles also on the docks adjacent to the stadium, right on the four acre waterfront park that the crafts are going to be building and maintaining at their own dollars. And the water shuttle will come right up to that dock. So we'll have water shuttle, commuter rail stop, access to Assembly Row Station, and also the Sullivan Station in Charlestown will also be there. So, and civil line extension. So we have literally five, five different ways to get to the stadium. When all this is built out, it will be one of the most accessible transit oriented corridors in the entire state. And it'll also benefit residents of Chelsea that want to go into Boston as well. So it won't be just residents of Everett benefiting. It won't be just game day attendees benefiting because everything will be there through its entirety going forward. This area has been, has had no transit really for years. And the reason why, it was no, there was no reason to build anything in that area. It's been delayed over time because there was no catalyst to make all this happen. We knew when we proposed a soccer stadium on that site that this would be the catalyst to make all the good things that were currently in development that were on paper but weren't paid for, but that were also, you know, needed in that area, that this would all come to fruition if there was a reason. The state does not build things unless it has to happen. And because it will have to happen to make this work, we now have commitments from the governor and her administration. She's appointed a person from her team to be the point person in her office that had anything to do with the stadium. So we have the buy-in from the governor, we have the buy-in from MBTA, the commuter rail, the neighboring properties, all the people that are invested in that area all want to see all these things come, you know, come to become a reality. So we are in a very good place, much better than we were even, you know, even a year ago. So now we are at the next phase of putting all that, all these plans together. DEP did a report as well to give some guidance on how we were going to clean the land up and what that meant for the shoreline and for other DPAs going forward. We also examine in the legislation, how do we make DPAs across the state more useful for the public? That should be of great interest to people in Chelsea because you have a large DPA here in the city of Chelsea. So we wanted Coastal Land Management Board to examine all of the DPAs, so cities like Chelsea, environmental justice communities like Chelsea and Everett, were not a dumping ground, quite honestly, for heavy industry for all these years, and we don't want that anymore. That is not what we want in our waterfront anymore. So I wrote into legislation the EJ language, which some folks here were very instrumental in helping. And that is an extra layer of protection even with the stadium. I didn't know at the time, I have Kristi, my chief of staff, I said Kristi was helping us write that. She can actually do this presentation better than I can. But when we wrote the language for the EJ communities, we didn't realize that even a couple of years later, we'd be implementing this in Everett and Chelsea in relation to the stadium. So there's an extra layer of protections there as well. Chelsea has a voice in a couple of ways to make sure that the project itself has limited impacts in this community. There's an amoeba process, which everyone in Chelsea, individually or collectively as a body, can weigh in and be part of that process of how you want this site to look. There's Chapter 91, because it's a waterway project, another layer of protection and public comment and public input during that process as well. And the EJ legislation also added a third layer of protection for communities like Everett and Chelsea to have a say on what goes on in their own communities. So there are several steps where the public will be engaged. Every public process, every government regulation will have a deadline and a process to voice your opinions and to voice your views on how this space should look. There will be a four acre public park, as I mentioned, on the site, on the waterfront will be opened for the first time since 1897. It was closed off to the public. And again, that'll be maintained and paid for by the crafts, craft family. And the stadium itself will run upwards of $700 million. That's a privately financed stadium. And just, you know, as, so you can get a picture of, you know, how more expensive stadiums have become over time, Gillette Stadium was $375 million, 65,000 seats. This is $700 million for 25,000 seats. So it is increased astronomically. We have a private developer that wants to come in and spend this kind of money cleaning up the land and building a privately financed stadium on that site. And again, being the catalyst for all the great transit options that will come our way because of it, that residents will get to enjoy 24/7. So there's a lot of excitement with this project. Obviously, you've seen the reports, my name is all over it. I've been in the news, I've been in the paper. I strongly believe this is a great project for our community and for our region. And I would not have put my name on it, my reputation on the line. I fought for this for almost three years to get this across the finish line. And I would not have kept going if I didn't think this was really beneficial to the communities that I serve. So with that, any questions?
Thank you so much, Senator. Councilor Sanigay.
Thank you, Senator. I just wanted to thank you and your staff and all the partners for such hard work. I wondered with the recent cancellation of the, on the federal level of the BRIC funding, if that was going to have any implication for this project. Many of you know, we have lost $50 million in federal funding and it is in that same area. So will there be a ripple effect from that and how will that be incorporated into the project?
Yeah, so the city manager knows as well, his administration is working with our office and the city of Everett for several years on this. We were able to not just get the federal grant, but we also got bond money in the state budget over several years of kind of combining money over time for the federal match. So we had $22 million in state money ready to go for this project as well, plus the $50 million in federal dollars. And then we were trying to fill the gap of the additional dollars that it was take to complete the project. We're very disappointed to hear this. And ironically, it was Trump, President Trump, in his first term, that created this program. So he created this program that we were benefiting from if we got the money. And ironically, he dismantled the program in his second term. So the $50 million was critical to complete the Island End Wall to stop flooding in that area. As part of the agreement with the environmental folks and the craft family, because we've heard about this environment, we've heard about this community benefits agreement that Everett has signed with the crafts, it's been all the news and people talk about it. Quite frankly, they've been using it against the city of Everett because they claim there's some backroom deal being done. I will tell you that how that project, how that agreement came about, what was in that agreement is something that will address what you're talking about. So I convened a meeting on the site with the environmental folks, the crafts, and elected officials from Everett and Charlestown. During that meeting, the environmental groups that were at that meeting said they wanted an agreement with the craft family prior to passing any legislation that will benefit the environment and other things that might come with that. So there were some groups in Chelsea that were also talking to the crafts. Miss River Watershed was the lead group on this. Conservation Law Foundation was also in the room, contrary to what you might hear in the press from their own executive director, who has been saying some false things across, I'm not going to go in, Kristi's probably saying, don't stop right there. But I am a little aggravated with them, quite frankly, because the environmental groups came to us and said, we want to have an agreement in place with the craft family prior to passing legislation. And then when that did happen, and they have their handprint on all these things that they put in this agreement, when people started talking about backroom deals and talking about how Everett had an agreement behind people's back, the groups that negotiated that agreement stepped back and never came forward to say what the true story was. So I like to bring them up in a forum like this and just say, you know, like, almost like question what was, what the sequence was, events, but I digress. But part of that agreement that the environmental folks wanted, and they were right, they wanted to build up this land 14 feet to make sure there wasn't any flooding in the area. So they were correct to make that part of the agreement. So that resiliency measure they put in there will keep the stadium in a different place than the surrounding area. So the crafts, again, at their own expense, will build up the land 14 feet to create a buffer for the stadium itself. But the other areas, we get some work to do. The other areas are very much in jeopardy. That was why the project was happening in the first place. That's why in 2017, when this was thought about, you know, now in 2025, you know, things have only gotten worse since then. And the cost actually increased exponentially over time. So $15 million that the federal government was giving, $22 million from the state, was a little less than half, a little more than half of what we actually needed after the rising costs of anything that was going into that project. So we're, you know, so Fidel's got a job to do. So, and you know, but we are, we are in a place where, so you're absolutely right, where, you know, it could, it could have impacted this area if we didn't have a measure in place that was, that the crafts had to be, had a honor. So 14 feet above sea level.
Thank you, Senator. Councilor Robinson.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Senator for his work. And actually, didn't realize we started talking about this three years ago, you and I. And the reason that I went to the Senator is I wanted to make sure that Chelsea was at the table for any benefits or anything that any other communities were getting. So therefore, he's always been an advocate for us. I have full faith in him that he'll make sure, anything that comes our way, he'll make sure that we get it. So on that, I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done. I know you stood alone on this project. You took a lot of beatings along the way. So you'd be... So you should be admired for standing tall. I just want to say thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
And I will say, as long as I'm there, Chelsea has to be at the table. Absolutely.
Okay, Counselor Robinson, I mean, Counselor Brown, my apologies.
Thank you for being here, Senator. And you know, I asked you this question before, so don't get mad at me. So, you know, about two years ago, I approached you and we talked about the host committee and, you know, why Chelsea name was not, you know, an official host committee. And tonight, in your, your, your discussion, you mentioned Everett and Boston, but you still didn't mention Chelsea. So I, and we believe that if we are listed as a host committee or the impact committee community, that, you know, there will be funds distributed yearly for us. Can you just tell us?
Yeah.
How Chelsea, why Chelsea was left out for having their name printed in?
Well, there's no designation of host community in the legislation. The legislation says that because the physical structure itself will be in Everett and in Charleston. And very, you know, disputing how much of a Boston it actually is, but it is part of Boston as well, the land itself. So that Alpha Street Bridge, for years, people didn't realize that Boston had some land on the other side. They thought that natural waterways are a boundary. But several years before, long before me and probably all of us, there used to be a toll on that bridge, which is hard to believe, right? But because of that toll, if you had land on both sides of the bridge, you kept the entire toll. So when Boston gave some land to Everett, they kept the other part of the, of the end of the bridge to get the full toll. That's how, that's how Boston still has land in that part of the city. But there's no designation itself of a host agreement, similar to the casino. So Chelsea wasn't a host community for the casino either. Chelsea was a surrounding community, which we haven't gotten that far yet. So the legislation does not designate communities of host surrounding, some of them itself is right across the street from the site itself. And they're not listed as host agreement either because the physical structure itself is not in some of them. So there'll be time, there'll be time for sure for Chelsea to have their voices heard. And obviously, I'll be there as well. But the legislation itself only talked about the communities that, where the project was going to be housed.
The reason why I bring that up, again, my colleague talked about the $50 million. I mean, and you also spoke about that, you know, you had money, $22 million, and you had money, and you're going to make sure the Kraft has committed to build up the wall. But a lot of other area that we were anticipating that money to be used for will still be, you know, with our hands out waiting to get help for that. And I just think, you know, again, this is a great opportunity to bring it to whoever's at the table regarding Chelsea as you move forward.
Yeah, no, I think that, you know, you're saying have the Krafts help build the wall.
Help with something.
Yeah, no, I get it. No, I just want to be clear what you're asking, yeah.
You know, they've been very, you know, good over the years to Chelsea. But again, this is something with $50 million, if no one's seen it the last two weeks, it's been in the local newspaper, then it was very alarming. It was some money that we were excited about. Congresswoman Presley, you know, others had fought years for that money, and it was given a wish list to us and to be taken away. We still have to fill the holes that, you know, where that money was going to cover.
Yeah, and I will say, you know, someone that I want to give kudos in this community was Emily, was really the lead person on this when it came to getting that money and getting the work done to get that commitment from the federal government. None of us saw that coming. I shouldn't say none of us saw it coming. We, and I'm not shocked based off the history of what's happening with FEMA and MEMA and all the, any, it was any kind of environmental justice or climate change, you know, anything that we're, that was getting any kind of federal dollars is all in jeopardy right now. So, you know, people wonder, how does it impact our community and what's happening in DC? There you go.
Thank you.
$15 million is not coming our way, which now creates a bigger problem for us going down in the future. So it is a big problem what's happening in DC. But I will make sure that I bring your concerns to the Krafts as well.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no other questions. Senator, thank you so much for your leadership as always. If you ever need our support, please do reach out. We are also here to support you. We know the work that you do, and just thank you for always having Chelsea in the forefront.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
All right, so we'll continue now. I believe we have one more item under memoriam and celebratory resolutions.
You have a resolution introduced by the council president and all members of council for Earth Day. Whereas Earth Day, an annual event created to promote environmental action and citizenship, was founded by the late Senator Gaylord Nelson and first celebrated April 22, 1970. And whereas, after witnessing years of environmental neglect, millions of Americans gathered in cities across our nation on the first Earth Day to demand basic protection for our planet and commit to leaving behind a healthier world for the next generation. And whereas, the first celebration of Earth Day is widely credited with launching the modern environmental movement, with nearly 200 million people in 141 countries participating in Earth Day celebrations by 1990. And whereas, the voices of the inaugural Earth Day participants ushered in an unparalleled period of grassroots and legislative activity that changed the way we interact with our environment, leading to the creation of the Environmental Protection Agency and passage of legislation such as the Clean Water Act, the Clean Air Act, and the Endangered Species Act. And whereas, new and continued challenges, including climate change, polluted oceans and waterways, deforestation, and the loss of other wildlife habitats reinforce the need for adequate protections for the air we breathe, the water we drink, the land we inhabit, and the animals we live alongside. And whereas, the theme for Earth Day 2025 is our power, our planet, inviting everyone around the world to unite behind renewable energy and triple the global generation of clean electricity by 2030. Now therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Chelsea City Council recognize April 22, 2025 as Earth Day, and the city of Chelsea affirm our collective responsibility in the global effort to protect our planet and express gratitude to the residents of Chelsea who participated in community programs offered throughout the city.
Thank you, Clerk. Is there a motion on the floor?
Move to adopt under unanimous consent.
Thank you, Counselor. You have the floor, Counselor Sanigay.
I just wanted to acknowledge what a wonderful day we had on Saturday from 9 to 12. We had a citywide cleanup that was sponsored by Green Roots and the Community Land Trust and the city of Chelsea. And even though it was extremely wet, everybody went out and spread out to various parts of the city for a cleanup, and it was, it was fantastic. So thanks to everyone for organizing.
Thank you, Counselor. I agree. Congrats to Green Roots and shout out for all the work that you're doing on this event. Any other counselors? No? Okay, moving on to, there's no public hearing this evening, so public speaking. Is anybody here for public speaking? All right, awesome. Please join us at the podium. State your name, your address, and you have three minutes, four minutes, my apologies.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Dario Medina. I'm 16 years old. I am a junior at Chelsea High School. I am also a member of the Chelsea Youth Commission. I work with a team of youth members, usually made up of the Chelsea High School students. We have a couple of other students that go to other schools to help run the youth organizations in Chelsea. We like to focus on youth mental health. We like to focus on things that are going on in Chelsea, problems that are actively going on, how we can fix them as youth, what we could do as a group to better Chelsea and make Chelsea more of a community to us and for those around us. We thought, like, a couple, like, six months ago, six, seven months ago, we were thinking, what can we do to get the youth active? What, how can we help the youth? What can we do to help one another? What is something that we would love to see in our inner community? That's when we all sat down with the help of Bee, Alex, and Bianca, and we thought about a festival. But what would we have at this festival? What's the point of this festival? We can't just have a festival just because. The festival is called a Youth Rise Festival because we want our youth to be empowered. We want our youth to feel like they belong. We want our youth to have opportunities for the future and different communities to grow, not only Chelsea, but we want to also inspire other youth communities around Everett, Revere, Malden, Boston, other, other cities, so they can help us as a group, so we can all unite and be strong together. The point of the Youth Rise Festival, as we can see on the banner, is to help each other's. And we're going to have internships, professional opportunities, jobs, free food, games, prizes, music, street art, dance, and more. When we thought about this, we were thinking, what in Chelsea, what's going on in Chelsea? We were thinking about the crime, thinking about the student engagement, how can we help faculty, how can we help students at Chelsea High or at Northeast as well? How can we get them to engage? That's when we thought about the street art and community building. There's a bunch of students at Chelsea High that love to share their art, love music, love STEM, love all those opportunities that are given to them. But they don't know how to reach out. There's a lot of opportunities, but they don't know how to get through them. We want to be that pathway to them. We want to give them a support, a hand in hand, as you may say, to give them a helping hand to help them in the future. So we would like to cordially invite you guys, everyone here, adults, city council members, to the Youth Rise Festival May 3rd, this Sunday. Doors open at 12 from 1 to 4 p.m. If everyone can please spread the word, please give it to youth. You don't have to be just a youth to be here. If you can come for 30 minutes, that'd be very appreciated. Show your support around Chelsea. Show your support around youth. Show that we do love one another. Show that you guys are great people. We all know you guys are amazing, and we really like you guys to support. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing. Always great to hear the voices of our youth commission here in the chambers. Anyone else?
My name is Marlene Jennings. I've been a proud resident of Chelsea for 26 years now. I don't know where that time went, but it's been a great 26 years. And during that time, I've had the opportunity to serve on different committees and boards and participate in different events here in the city. And I'm very proud to be called someone from Chelsea. I very much appreciate the openness that I've had and the friendship I've had with Fidel over the years and Leo, Calvin, those of, some of, others of you I've not had the pleasure to meet, but I'm very happy to speak with you this evening. I also have watched Senator Sal for years work very hard to make this a better place, and he's done a darn good job. And I have to say, I'm just blown away by the youth that I've seen here tonight. And I think our future is going to be in great hands with these young people here. I come here tonight specifically to remind you, city council people, that there are a lot of people that are really against the proposed seafood processing plant at Admiral's Hill. I've been over this a few times with, more than a few times, with Fidel. You know, it's really interesting, the more I think about it and the more that I sit here this evening, my original complaints were odor, is you're going to have odor with seafood. You just can't get around that. And then we're going to have rodents, and then we're going to have this and that and another thing. But what stands out even more, and I still believe that, I still believe that that is going to be a problem for a beautiful part of the city that you don't have to really do much to. You know, the rest of the city, you're in full-blown redo everything mode. And, you know, that's a pretty nice part of the city. You don't have to really do a lot there. You have got that one location that needs something special. But more important now, you look, just what we heard tonight, we have a stadium coming in. We have what's going on with Forbes, where that is going to be taken over and redone. We have Market Basket expanding their footprint where they are. And I think that we deserve, we being the collective city of Chelsea and everyone that lives here, we deserve something better than a seafood processing plant in that location where Signature Food used to be. I mean, I just think you're taking a beautiful part of the city, and you're not seeing the potential of what that could be. That could be something spectacular. What that is, you know, we got to talk about it. I mean, I know they've talked about having a YMCA in the city. Why not put the Y there? It's big enough. So I just think that we are losing out on an opportunity of making Chelsea. I understand, and I support you, I support everybody in bringing more jobs there. But I don't, I think any, any other business could bring more jobs there without the side effects of potential odors, more, more rodents. I mean, it just to me, makes a lot more sense to have something beautiful added to the city rather than a seafood processing plant. So that's why I'm here, just to remind you, I understand there are two more meetings about this. And do we have the dates for those meetings yet?
The city manager can share with you afterwards, but we have just one more, less than a minute.
Okay, all right. I'm actually finished. I wanted to just thank you all very much for everything you guys do. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I put out there city manager, but city manager, if you and I want, we'll follow up, one of us will follow up with you. Thank you for sharing. All right. Please state your name and address and four minutes.
Okay, second time here, getting better public speaking. I wish I was sitting at home, but there are some pressing issues that I still have to share with you again. I just want to say, like, first, thank you. I'm trying to figure out how to do these things. Respected members of the council and members of the audience here, I just want to begin with that it's not me versus you, and it's not the community versus you. It's all of us together, Chelsea Palante, we just have to figure out how to make this situation with the fish processing facility a little bit better. I know there was an amendment in the Chelsea zoning ordinances for the fish processing, 24Z8. It was approved because it's a legitimate aspect of public interest, which I don't believe is of public interest. It promotes economic development, that's great, 150 jobs. These are not new. These are jobs that already exist. Nobody has promised us that these are going to be people from Chelsea. And encourages most appropriate use of land throughout the city. We can build a park there or anything else. The most important thing for me is that I represent my community, which is 325 Admiral's Hill, yes. And I just want to share, there's 150 apartments there. I hope this is big enough for you to read, but people live here. This is our building. This is the parking. I just want to say that home is a sanctuary where individuals and families can find comfort, rest, and sense of security. This is where we live. This is just one side of the building. And we're going to be severely affected. I'm not here to talk against the fish processing facility. I'm more concerned about the parking because this is air and noise pollution. And noise pollution and air pollution, these are very tough subjects to talk about because if I say 150 snakes were released in Chelsea, the whole community is going to go upside down when I talk about noise pollution. That's a little bit hard to understand what it is. So I would like to play for you sounds of trucks in just a second. There is also one more community, which is...
I'm so sorry to interrupt. We actually cannot play audio or do the visuals, but you still have time to talk if you want to share.
I'll just talk to you, and you can imagine.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so there is another building, which is Cohen Florence Levine Estates on Captain Road, 105 apartments. I went to talk to them. Nobody has an idea that this is happening. These are elderly people that are just stuck there, and they're going to live there, and they're going to be tortured in their own apartments as, as we are going to be. We're going to be hostages in our apartments. We're going to start leaving. We resigned the lease with my wife without knowing this is going to be happening. Their new lease is coming to the apartment building. Nobody's telling them these things. And it's a little bit hard. The most important part is the distance to the parking. Forget about the factory. The factory is going to smell, and it's going to be terrible. The parking is 15 meters, 46 feet from our building. You can imagine the reverberations between these two buildings. It's going to be 24 hours, 365 days of the year of trucks noise, and people are not going to be able to function. Literally, there's going to be lawsuits. You know, there's going to be media involvement. There's going to be so much trouble with this. And I don't want us to get there. I want us to just solve this in the best way. The parking lot... The parking lot is not part of the industrial zone. The parking lot is our zone, so please, at least if you're making this factory, make them park on the other side, on the main road. Thank you so much. There's much more in the previous episode on the YouTube channel from the last time I was here, seven, eight pages of very important things that we need to solve.
Thank you, and I, if I could share any of the visuals that you have, you can also email it to us, with just protocol not to have them...
As well as seven pages of very detailed report on...
Awesome, yes, please do share them, thank you so much. Anyone else here for public speaking? No? Okay, well, thank you all for joining us this evening. We're gonna move on now, the public speaking portion of this meeting is done. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the city council dated April 7th, 2025.
Is there a motion on the floor? Thank you, Councilor Brown. Moving on now to communications from the city manager.
First communication received from the city manager responding to council order 2557, review fines for parking violations. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to council order 2557, requesting that the city review the existing penalty structure for traffic and parking violations, with an emphasis on overnight parking without a residential sticker. Our director of constituent services completed a thorough review of neighboring communities and created the chart attached for the council's reference. During our engagement with residents, parking is among their top concerns. We appreciate the concern raised by Councilor's Antigut and agree wholeheartedly that there needs to be improvement within our current parking program to prioritize parking for our residents. Our current structure is comparable to our surrounding communities. The $25 fee for parking without a residential sticker overnight is equal to that of our neighbors in Everett and Winthrop. While doing research for this council order, Everett announced that all parking fines would be increased by $5 effective July 1st, 2025. Revere currently charges $20 for the same infraction. Somerville charges $50 for this infraction. The chart attached shows the community comparisons. An interesting approach might be targeting specific vehicles versus making a city Y-change. During our research, we learned that Everett charges $50 for commercial vehicles and $50 for an overnight parking violation. Everett also charges a different amount, $50, for overnight parking fines in the downtown area. We are mindful of striking the balance between effective parking enforcement and burdening residents with additional costs. If the council has a desire to increase these violations, I will refer this matter to the Traffic and Parking Commission for review in a public hearing on the matter. Thank you for your ongoing support.
Thank you, clerk, is there a motion on the ground?
I'd like to make a motion to accept and file, seeing no objections. What word am I looking for? And I would, under suspension, and I'd like to briefly speak on it. So I just wanted to thank you for doing the research, and, um, that really was my goal with bringing this up, was that we could start to have a conversation and start to think of other ways to tackle the issue. So I appreciate you offering some other suggestions, and let's just keep doing that.
Thank you, counselor.
Madam President, can I speak quickly?
Counselor Jimenez, you have the floor?
Yeah, I just, um, I think as, as part of, as we're going through this, it may be worth for us, for the council to, to have some conversations in the parking planning subcommittee around, you know, whether it might be worth looking into expanding our hours of enforcement for some of this, for our resident permit, right? My, my understanding is that the reason why we started doing this overnight was because people were parking here and leaving, going on air, on a, on a plane and just like leaving their car here for a week, right? And then that's what led to, you know, us doing parking enforcement at night to make sure that people weren't doing that from other communities. And so as we're seeing our community have larger needs for parking during the day, it may be worth us thinking about whether we, we should be enforcing resident permits, you know, expanded hours. I don't know if all day, but I know that other communities, like the ones mentioned in this, are doing that throughout the day. So, you know, we need to figure out a way for us to, you know, these, these bans are not to make money, they are a way for us to enforce rules, right? And if we, if we don't want people parking, then we should, we should, you know, look at increased fines so that we can prevent people from, from, from doing it. It's, it's not to get more money, it's to disincentivize people from doing it. It's, and, and that's, I think, a very worthwhile conversation that we should be having. The stadium is gonna potentially bring more people to, to the area, right? Especially since there's not gonna be a whole lot of parking there, which I fully agree with what the senator talked about in terms of parking, but we need to think about what are those people gonna do? Are they gonna park in Chelsea streets? We need to figure out what we're gonna do about that and think about increasing the enforcement of our rules. Anyway, worthwhile conversation, and I would encourage us to, encourage us to have them in a subcommittee separately.
Counselor Taylor?
So as I've said many times, parking is one of the most important issues facing this city, especially to all of our constituents. I think that it goes beyond just debating with each other or discussing with each other in a subcommittee. We need to engage the public in a public discourse regarding parking. And an overall parking plan needs to be developed. Now, we can't do that until we kind of get the people from all the districts to weigh in. I have been trying to get people to take up this, this, uh, this topic with the public for some time now. So, I, I would encourage everybody, you know, speak with the people in your districts, and let's, let's, let's move on this topic, not just for the fines, but, but, but in general, how to solve, what's the best way to solve the parking, what are the parking problems in Chelsea, and what's the best way to go about solving them? I think, I think we should not be leaving this up to others, and that we need to engage the public, get their feedback, and figure this out. Then we can have a subcommittee about what we're gonna do about it. So I would encourage everybody to, to take up this topic, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Recupero?
And Chelsea is a very small city, there's very limited parking. The, this council, the council prior to this council, already took remedies to fix that. One is when you have these apartment builders that are being built that don't have sufficient parking, they cannot get a residence sticker, for one. So that's one of the biggest things we took care of in that way. The second thing is, this city needs a parking garage. For years, it needed one. And the third thing is, if we charge the residents more and more money for parking, even for increase, you say it doesn't have nothing to do with revenue, but how many, that does have to do with revenue, it has to do with punishing the people. Because you already, if you don't have a residence sticker here at night, you cannot park. So every night you put here, and it's $25, you multiply 25 times 7, and then it's already accumulated. Uh, you know, I don't understand why we have to increase. We're not Boston, we're a community, we're not like Boston. We can't charge people, this is not $200,000 every year, person that lives here, you're gonna hurt the poor people that are here. I can understand the concerns that we all have about parking. I have the same issue, where I live, I can't park anymore. So what are we gonna do? Get rid of all the cars? Fine them to death? How do, how do we get a, like, fellow counselor says, we need to talk more how to solve this problem, not ticketing them more. And once we understand how to solve this issue, then we can move forward and try to fix it. Ticketing and giving them more money to pay for tickets ain't gonna solve the problem. The problem is still gonna be there. Like fellow counselor says, just let's talk and understand and try to do something to fix the situation instead of tagging and putting more money, 'cause you already got, you're already paying for tickets. They give you tickets if you have a non-resident sticker, if, if you don't have one. They give you tickets if you have a sticker, that's a rejection sticker, they give you tickets for being so far away from the curb, so you get all kinds of tickets. How much tickets can you impose on our community? What do you wanna do? You know, how much fines can you put on them? Let's fix the situation without thinking about fines. Let's try to make a solution and how to fix it.
Thank you, counselor. Moving on to the next item on the agenda.
Next communication received from the city manager regarding the FY26 budget semitole. Dear councilors, enclosed you will find the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. The budget funds city expenditures at $110,898,68 and school department expenditures at $150,891,360 for a total budget of $261,701,228. The school department's budget has increased by 7.54 percent, most of it paid from new Chapter 70 funding generated by the Student Opportunity Act. The city expenditures have increased by 5.84 percent. Most of the city's increases are reflected in salary accounts. This is due mainly to raises required in collective bargaining agreements and to the addition of new positions on our public safety departments. The new public safety positions, a total of five, will improve response time for our fire department and will result in more efficient delivery of service to residents. We also propose the creation of two positions in public works that will allow us to complete our vehicle maintenance in-house, resulting in substantial savings. I have enclosed a listing and rationale for the new positions, which we can discuss in further detail during budget deliberations. The city is able to absorb the increase in new personnel because of our favorable financial position. This year, the city will propose the modest use of reserves to support the budget in the amount of $1,710,663. You will note that this year's regional school district expenditure has increased by $808,000 to $2,900,000. That line item now includes the fourth payment of the debt for the new Northeast Region Vocational High School, a total debt service payment of $1,684,759.
Madam President, move to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file under communication, if there are no objections.
Move to conference.
Seeing none.
Schedule the budget hearings.
Moving it to conference.
Your budget hearings have been scheduled for March 12th, 13th, and 14th.
Thank you. Thank you, clerk, thank you, counselor, moving on to the next item.
Next item, we have a communication received from the city manager providing a balanced update on free cash as of April 2025. Dear councilors, I am writing to provide a proactive update to the city council on how much free cash has been expended since January 1st, 2025. Our biggest use of free cash is our annual capital improvement plan. Our free cash position allows us to complete critical projects without having to borrow funds and hampering our community with long payments and high interest rates. We are fortunate to have a low amount of borrowing compared to our neighboring communities. Free cash typically follows the same pace. Our auditing department works with the Department of Revenue to certify free cash in January or February. Shortly thereafter, the city manager submits request to the city council for free cash to complete projects that have arisen throughout the fiscal year. The city council then votes on our annual capital improvement plan, heavily supplemented by free cash. Finally, the city manager made two additional free cash requests as we close out the fiscal budget. The city council must vote on every request to use free cash. I am impressed with the thoroughness of our Ways and Means Committee in asking tough questions and ensuring that we are fiscally responsible. Our administration is committed to maintaining fiscal responsibility and using our resources to satisfy the needs of our residents. This is a tough balance, but it is one I am proud to achieve with the support of the council. This year, we have done something I am truly incredibly proud of. We used a significant amount of our free cash to replenish our rainy day funds, called general stabilization accounts. Our general stabilization fund has a balance of $16,576,710 and 28 cents. And our school capital stabilization fund has a balance of $2,796,451 and 31 cents. If you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact me, thank you for your support.
Thank you, clerk, how does the council wish to proceed?
Accept and file a communication under suspension, if there are no objections.
Seeing none, thank you, counselor, moving on.
Next, we have a communication received from the city manager requesting funds for receivership expenses related to Forbes. Dear councilors, I am writing with a request to fund an additional $200,000 for receivership expenses related to the Forbes property. The council has played an instrumental role in the city's legal process on the Forbes property. Following a nine-alarm fire on the property, the city council approved $500,000 from the city's general stabilization fund to address immediate safety concerns on the property. Following the fire, our law department successfully petitioned for the property to be placed into receivership. The receiver has worked diligently to secure the property, including boarding up many of the vacant buildings, hiring a security company to monitor the property, demolishing dangerous buildings, and ensuring that debris is properly covered. The receiver also worked on marketing the property and facilitating the sale to a responsible owner. On March 25th, the courts approved a sale to Mass Autobahn. Since that approval, the property owner has filed an appeal and has filed for bankruptcy in the state of California. While these legal matters are resolved, we are forced with a tough decision to continue funding the cost of receivership. We have $82,000 remaining of the initial $500,000 funded in November of 2024. These funds will not see us through the summer months while the council is on recess. We also expect that the warm weather will only increase vandalism and hazards on the property. The courts agree that taxpayers should not be forced to cover the cost to secure the property, but we cannot risk the possibility of another public safety incident. Attached to this letter, you will find the invoices incurred to date. The invoices fall into the categories below. You will also find a council order to fund this request, thank you for your support.
Thank you, clerk, is there a motion?
Motion to accept and file under communication, if there are no objections. I'd like to speak on it real quick.
Yeah, you have the floor, counselor.
And there's an order attached that's coming later. So I, I just wanna, I just wanna thank the city for, for all the work that they're doing on this property. It's kind of the epitome of an absent landlord that you have here, that's, you know, this is a property that is just in complete disrepair. We are trying to do something with it, but they are essentially getting in the way of what we're trying to do by just delaying and delaying and delaying everything. So just thank you to everybody who's managing this process and making sure that we actually are able to maintain a baseline level of decency in the property while we navigate the legal process to make sure that we can actually use it. I just wanna let the public know, we are all very excited about the potential in this, in this property, and we're gonna definitely be keeping an eye on this. And we will be making, all, anything that we spend on this is going to be given back to the city once the property is sold from the funds that are received from the, from the sale. So, yeah, just hoping that that happens quickly, thank you.
Thank you, counselor, if I may speak from the chair, I...
Move to suspend the rules so that the madam president can speak from the chair.
So I echo my fellow counselors' words. This being my district, I have heard a lot from residents who are interested and excited to just see something happen with this property. And, and I'm just glad that our counselors as a whole, whether you are representing this district or you're at large, I see a lot of interest and excitement for this, even on the school committee side, the school committee representative for District 3 has reached out. So we are all on board, and so for the public to just know that we, we, as soon as we are ready to hold some public meetings and, and get some input and insight, we will keep them posted. Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda.
Next communication received, requesting council appropriate funds from the overlay reserve fund. Dear councilors, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 25, I am writing to respectfully request the city council appropriate $3,172,287 from the overlay reserve fund. In accordance with the statute, I have requested the Board of Assessors to transfer $3,172,287 from the overlay reserve fund. The request was approved by the Board April 8th. Of the total amount, $2.5 million is intended to fund capital improvements to the city's property at 324 Marginal Street. These improvements will include land and building enhancements that could increase the city's ability to generate additional revenue from the property. An additional $672,287 is designated to fund a solar project that will cover 100% of the property's energy consumption. Importantly, these funds will only be expended upon the successful negotiation of a new lease agreement with the current tenant that includes increased revenue for the city and a longer lease term. This condition ensures that the investment is aligned with the city's long-term financial and operational interests. Once the transfer is complete and a favorable lease agreement has been executed, I will return to the city council to request approval of a new lease contract with the tenant that will go to at least 2045. For the reasons set forth above, I respectfully ask that the council appropriate the $3,172,287 in overlay surplus to the building improvements line item within the Marginal Street Fund.
Madam President, move to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file under communication, if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, thank you, counselor, moving on.
Next communication received from the city manager requesting funds for All American City Awards Ceremony. Dear councilors, I am writing with a request for funding to attend the All American City Award Conference from June 26th to June 30th. We are requesting $53,000 to cut... We are requesting fifty-three thousand dollars to cover event registration, round-trip flights from Boston to Denver, a four-night hotel stay, as well as supplies and branding for the event. We are actively working on creating a planning committee for the event. We estimate taking thirty representatives from Chelsea. We will make sure that the trip includes a diverse cross-section of our community and that we make significant preparation for our presentation. It would be incredible achievement for Chelsea to win the All American City Award. In the Commonwealth, only two other communities have received the award three times, Boston and Somerville. This win would be a huge boost to our community at a time where we need it most.
Madam President, move to waive the rest of the reading, except and file under communication if there are no objections.
Seeing none. Councillor Sandiget? You have the floor.
I just wanted to say that I was lucky enough to be part of the delegation that went to Denver for the All America City Award in two thousand and fourteen, and it was an incredible experience. And I agree with the city manager that it would be a wonderful, wonderful thing for us to come home with. So I was so excited to see that we were a finalist and palante.
Yes. I see there's only two other communities also that have won this award three times. So it's exciting. All right, moving on to the next item.
Next communication received from the city manager regarding ISD software resource allocation and a free cash request. Dear councillors, over the past several months, the city has undertaken a comprehensive evaluation of software solutions to modernize and improve permitting and enforcement operations within the Inspection Services Department. This effort was led by our deputy city manager of operations in close collaboration with the deputy and deputy director of ISD, as well as key members of the department's inspection and administrative staff. The process began with a review of six software vendors capable of supporting ISD's needs. Through in-depth evaluation and hands-on testing, the internal team narrowed the field to two finalists. At that stage, we engaged several stakeholder departments, including law, assessing permitting and land use planning, information technology, and housing and community development to participate in demonstration sessions and provide critical feedback. These departments frequently rely on ISD data and participate in permitting and enforcement workflows, making their input vital and ensuring the solution supports cross-departmental collaboration and citywide efficiency. This coordinated review process has led to the selection of a software platform that will significantly improve how the city manages permitting and enforcement. The system will deliver a streamlined and more user-friendly permit application process for residents and contractors, improved ability to hold problem property owners accountable through centralized data and enforcement tools, increased transparency and robust data sharing capabilities across departments and with the public, and enhanced reporting tools that will assist in tracking, measuring, and responding to trends in real time. We are now seeking council support-
Madam President, move to waive the rest of the reading. Okay.
I'd like it to be read in full, including the amounts, please.
We are now seeking council support to fund the acquisition and implementation of the system. We respectfully request the council approve the following: A free cash request in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars to support implementation costs associated with data migration from multiple legacy platforms currently in use by ISD. This investment aligns directly with several council priorities, including improving the efficiency of the permitting process, strengthening accountability for problem property owners, and increasing operational transparency through better data collection and reporting. We appreciate your consideration and support as we take this important step forward for the Inspection Services Department and the city as a whole. For the above reasons, I respectfully ask the council approve all these requested expenditures. Our staff is ready to answer any questions the council might have on these requests. A draft of the proposed order is attached.
Move to accept and file under communication if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections. Does anyone wish to speak? If not, I would like permission to speak from the chair if possible.
Move to suspend the rules so that Madam President can speak from the chair. There are no objections.
Thank you, councillor. I just want to briefly, for the public to understand, this has been a long way coming. And bless you, councillor. And we are very excited and grateful for the work that our city manager and his team has invested into this. This, for the public to understand, means that our departments, whether you are in ISD, whether you are in our legal department, or in- are, you know, trying to get information from our fire department because of a fire, or trying to get information from many of our other departments, which is, whether it's DPW or whatever the case may be, the many departments that many times share some responsibilities together when there is a crisis in the community related to housing. This is a database that's going to help push this communication forward so that our tenants, who often are delayed in getting response or any services, are waiting for, right? Now we will have a database that will expedite this process and ensure that landlords are held accountable, tenants are able to get the information needed, whether it's our fire department or nine-one-one dispatch office are able to get the documents needed to process whatever is needed in that case of an emergency. I am so glad that this is happening, and this is going to be a larger campaign that the city manager has put forward with the help of us here and also many of you, the constituents and the public, who came up here and spoke multiple times at the podium requesting that we do something and that we act fast and that we think about the conditions in the apartments. This is one of those actions that's going to push us forward. And we'll go along with an education campaign because obviously we cannot make these changes in City Hall and expect our families and residents to know exactly what's happening. So we will be pushing forward some materials and how we can make sure that also the public understands what goes on inside City Hall when you call or when you report something so that you guys understand exactly how it gets from point A to point B, C, and D. So just thank you so much, city manager, and thank you to our public for making sure that your voices were heard in this space and that we were actively working on those issues. Moving on to the next item.
Madam President, I'd like to move something out of order, suspend the rules. I'd like to move our approval of the person for the historical commission. We have our friend here, David Matute, who's being, who's up. And there's a number of items on the agenda, in case he would like to make it home. I think he'd appreciate moving us out of order if, there are no objections.
I am seeing no objections. Let's proceed.
Before you, you have a communication received from the city manager being read for the second time, requesting approval of appointment to the Historical Commission. Dear councillors, pursuant to section four dash two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individual to boards and commissions in the city. For appointment to the Historical Commission, Mr. David Matute of Chelsea. The term expires April first, twenty twenty-seven. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment.
Move to adopt by roll call vote.
Seeing no objections. It's a roll call vote.
Yes, vote to adopt. Councillor Tenari Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Councillor Recupero?
Yes.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Teshia is absent. Councillor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Sandiget?
Yes.
Councillor Vega?
Yes.
Councillor Brown? Absent. And Councillor De Jesus?
Yes.
Nine members voting in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Appointment approved.
Thank you, clerk. Moving on to the next item.
Returning to regular order of business, we have a communication received from the city manager requesting acceptance of Green Roots grant to the city of Chelsea. Dear councillors, I am writing to request the necessary council action to formally accept a grant award of five hundred and twenty thousand dollars from Green Roots, funded by an anonymous donor for the development of Bear Park at two twelve Congress Avenue. Green Roots is an environmental justice nonprofit located here in Chelsea and a strong partner of the city in many of our parks, open space, and climate resilience projects. The city of Chelsea has struck a fortuitous partnership with Green Roots on the development of Bear Park. Working with them, we have been able to have a years-long community engagement process for this new park, which will provide badly-needed new open space and important cooling benefits for the surrounding neighborhood. The grant will provide funds to support the disposal of contaminated soil at the site, which has been found to have lead levels which are harmful to human health and are significantly expensive to dispose of. The funds will also allow us to add additional features to the park, including a community rain barrel neighbors can draw from to water street trees as part of Green Roots' True Keeper program and a drinking fountain. The project is funded by a Parklands Acquisition and Restoration for Communities grant through the Massachusetts Department of Conservation Services and city funds. The program is overseen by the Department of Housing and Community Development. The private grant funding will decrease the need for future local funding to-
Wave the rest of the reading and take a roll call vote.
Something coming up in the new business.
Yep. All right, moving on to the next item.
Next communication received from the city manager requesting acceptance of Mystic River Watershed Association funds to the city of Chelsea. Dear councillors, I am writing to request the necessary council action to formally accept a grant award of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the Mystic River Watershed Association for the removal of the slayed mill berm on Mill Creek and related improvements. The Mystic River Watershed Association is active in a variety of sectors, including natural restoration, education, climate resilience, and increased water and air quality. Since two thousand and nineteen, the Mystic River Watershed Association has supported the Housing and Community Development's, Department's efforts to increase public access to Mill Creek. This grant award, originally from an anonymous foundation and subawarded through the MIWRA, will advance the network of public access and ecological improvement projects the city is working on to complete along Mill Creek. The historic berm that currently obstructs Mill Creek currently obstructs the flow of the waterway and prevents its use for recreational purposes. As we continue working to improve the water quality in Mill Creek and promote public access to the only non-industrialized waterway that borders our city, partially removing this berm and improving the habitat that surrounds it will be an important step towards getting residents out onto the water. This project has received funding from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration through our coastal habitat restoration and resilience grants for tribes and underserved communities. And this grant funded MIWRA, funded by an anonymous foundation, will buttress those grant funds with additional security to ensure we can complete the project. The fund will serve as a model for nature-based coastal adaptation that can mitigate flooding, restore and imperil salt marsh, and extend contiguous publicly accessible waterfront space that can be used by all members of the community. The partial removal of the slayed mill dam would serve to increase tidal flow, allowing the tide to make its way farther upstream and for the drainage of stormwater that has historically been trapped upstream. Restoration would increase the diversity of plant species, reduce phragomite stands, and increase habitat value. Approximately seventeen acres of wetland habitat are currently directly influenced by the berm.
Madam President, can we wave the rest of the reading? Seeing no- If there are no objections. Seeing none?
Accept and file.
Yes. Thank you, councillor. Moving on to the next item.
Our final communication received from the city manager requesting approval of appointments to boards and commissions. Dear councillors, pursuant to section four dash two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. Appointment to the Historical Commission, Mr. Cameron Kirkpatrick of Chelsea. Appointment to the Historical Commission, Ms. Nia De Young of Chelsea. And appointment to the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, Raymond Morales of Chelsea. Respectfully request your approval of these appointments.
Madam President, move to, move to the second reading.
Moving to the second reading. Seeing no objections. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Sandiget?
I'm so sorry. I just didn't know where the person who was here, David-
That was for the second reading, which already passed.
Oh, okay. Oh.
This is the first reading for these.
Okay, I was confused with that thing.
Thank you, councillor. Moving on. Two communications and petitions to the council.
First communication received comes from Councillor Kelly Garcia regarding Chelsea Public Schools indicators of success for March twenty twenty-five.
Councillor Garcia.
I'd like to accept and file and accept, oh, Lord. Sorry. Little rusty after vacation team. My apologies. I'd like to accept and file under suspension. If there are no objections, I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, councillor.
Team, what you have in front of you is our monthly indicators of success. I'd like to point your attention to the last page and shout out the, sorry, the page two. My apologies. And shout out the team at the high school. We have, our dropout rate has increased. Last year was five point three, thirty-five percent. Now this year, it is three point seventy-eight percent. And so it is the lowest percentage in the last three years. And so I just wanted to highlight that, that percent, that rate. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, councillor. Moving on to the next item on the agenda.
Next, we have a communication addressed to the council president from the Office of Planning and Land Use Permit and Planning Board regarding the discontinuance of Merritt Road. Dear councillor De Jesus, at a duly posted regular meeting of the planning board held Tuesday, April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, the Chelsea Planning Board voted unanimously to approve and endorse the plan to discontinue Merritt Road from its intersection at Webster Avenue to its intersection at Stockton Street.
Thank you, clerk.
Accept and file a communication under suspension. There are no objections.
Seeing none. Thank you, councillor. Moving on to the next item.
Next, we have another communication received from the Office of Permitting and Land Use Planning directed to the council president. Dear councillor De Jesus, on behalf of the Chelsea Planning Board, I enclose for consideration by the council a proposed zoning amendment relative to eligibility for participation in the resident sticker parking program for projects that receive zoning relief. Section thirty-four dash one oh six J six of the Chelsea zoning ordinance is currently worded as follows. Any relief from off-street parking requirements in this zoning ordinance shall disqualify that location from participating in the residential parking sticker program. This has been interpreted to mean that the tenants or residents of residential units proposed in zoning petitions that are in non-compliance with any aspect of the off-street parking regulations, number of spaces, size of parking spaces, setbacks from property lines and buildings, parking aisle width, and so on, are not eligible to receive off-street parking stickers. It is the- It is the board's understanding that the ordinance was intended to address those developments that received relief from the regulation for the number of off-street parking spaces. Although it is not frequent, there are instances where some zoning petitions include the required number of off-street parking spaces but need relief only for the location of the parking spaces due to property lines and buildings. It does not seem fair to apply the restriction in those instances. The attached amendment would change the wording to read as follows. Any relief from the number of required off-street parking spaces in the zoning ordinance shall disqualify that location from participating in the residential parking sticker program. The proposed wording will limit ineligibleibility for participation in the city's resident sticker program only to those instances where the location has received relief for the number of required off-street parking spaces. If the council accepts this request at its April twenty-eighth meeting and move it to a hearing by the planning board, the board can take it up at its May twenty-seventh meeting and return a recommendation to the council in time for a council hearing in June. As always, planning board staff are available to the council to give details on this proposed change, answer any questions you may have. John De Priest and I will make ourselves available for this purpose.
Thank you, clerk. Is there a motion?
Move to accept and file under communication if there are no objections. And I'd actually- I'd like to suspend the rules for a minute to ask a question of the city manager, if that's possible.
Seeing no objections.
Yeah.
City manager, you, thank you.
So I'm just, I'm curious. So the communication is coming on behalf of the planning board as a whole. I'm just curious if the administration has a position on this, whether it's the same or different from the planning board as a whole.
No, it is the same. And what's before you, it's more of a cleanup of language, right? So since, since the ordinance was implemented, I believe in two thousand and nineteen, we think that it has worked fantastically. Great. We support it one hundred percent. But what happens is that the language is very broad. And what it means is that if, if a developer asks for any sort of relief, then we exclude them from the parking program. What, and what, what we believe is the intent is that if they don't provide the number of parking spots, then we should exclude them from the parking program. So the, it's essentially a cleanup of language. We want to make it very clear that if developers do not provide the required number of parking, then they are excluded. Not if they, if they don't provide, you know, the aisle width or the setback of the building or other things that really don't have anything to do with parking.
Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, committee reports.
First committee report received from Councillor Recupero from the Meeting of Subcommittee on Aging and Independence, Veterans Affairs and Community Advancement, held April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Accept and file the communication. Like to speak on it?
Seeing no objections. You have the floor, councillor.
We had a meeting about the veterans, how the, what we're going to do during Veterans Day. And everything was, we're going to have speakers and they're going to provide an extra food truck for the people that are there. And so it's going to be even better than it was the last time. And I hope it gets better and better. And we probably, we're going to probably talk about bringing back the parade, the veterans that we used to have in this city that disappeared. Maybe we could bring it back. Maybe we should, we could bring it back. And when everybody this year, you'll see it better. And I hope more people will attend the events. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on.
Next committee report received from the council president from the Meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference, held April 8th, 2025.
Is there a motion on the floor? Thank you, thank you, Counselor, sure. I will give some quick updates. So we had a meeting on April 8th. Thank you to our DPW Public Works Commissioner Kate and our city manager. Essentially just to go over our annual sewer and water enterprise funds. The two largest expenses, which are the MWRA assessment and the debt service, seventy percent of the total budget for FY26. We are locating a MWRA, a preliminary of four point seven increase for Chelsea. The city signed a new trash collection and disposal contract in 2025. And we now have costs increased, costs have increased significantly, significantly across the industry. As such, the city is proposing a ten percent increase in trash rates. And that is it. I don't know if any of my colleagues want to add anything else. The city is proposing a three point five percent increase in water rates across all three tiers, with the increase in sewer rates being zero percent for tier one, point five percent for tier two, one percent for tier three combined. As it follows, one point seven five percent for tier one, two percent for tier two, and two point two five percent for tier three. I believe all of these are public notes from our subcommittees and our conferences. So I know that for the public, you know, understanding the tiers and knowing where you fit can be complicated just from our description now. But you do have access to this information online. And if not, you can always reach out to us. Our city manager is happy to answer any questions. Thank you. Moving on to the next item.
Next committee report received from Councilor Taylor from the Meeting of the Subcommittee on Ways and Means, held April 15th.
Is there a motion?
Accept and file the committee report, I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
So in the last Ways and Means Committee, we discussed three financial orders. The first one was to basically transfer over thirty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred seventy-six dollars to the Health and Human Services Budget to, to cover salary costs for an employee, the community health worker that is currently paid by ARPA. The second financial order was to authorize departments to pay prior year expenses in the amount of three thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars eleven cents. And the third one was actually the, the good one. To transfer of unspent funds from prior CIP projects in the amount of nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars, six hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-four cents to the downtown Broadway Water and Sewer Utilities Project. I wanted to just give a special attaboy to Michael Mason for, as he likes to put it, squeezing the rag dry, finding all the monies that were unspent. And so we do not need to appropriate other funds or use free cash. And we can transfer the unspent, that, that's quite a bit of money, almost a million dollars. So, and, and, and that is the second time he's done that. So, thank you, Michael, appreciate it. Thank you, that's the conclusion of the report.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to the next item.
Final committee report received from Councilor Jimenez Rivera from the Meeting of the City Manager Evaluation Committee on April 15th.
Madam President, I'd like to accept and file under committee reports. And I'd like to just quickly give a brief report. So the, the City Manager Evaluation Committee held its first meeting on April 15th. We basically took a look at what we did the last time we did a city manager evaluation, which was in 2021, I believe. And kind of used that as a, as a structure to, to set up the process that we have laid out. We agreed that we would create three separate surveys to get comments from different groups of people that are important in this. The first one, first and foremost, Chelsea residents. So we have a form that is actually up on the city website. It's been emailed out, it's in the, I posted it in the Chelsea MA What's Happening Facebook group. If you haven't seen it, go look at any of those places. If you can find it, shoot me an email and I'll send it to you. Thank you to everybody who has already completed it. Second, we have a forum for city department heads, so that they can give their, their feedback as well. That one is anonymous, since they are employees. And then the last one is representatives from, from the major community-based organizations in the city of Chelsea. So we are also going to be sharing this information on the Chelsea Record. So please share it with everyone. We want everyone's input so that we can give the best evaluation that we can. And as we mentioned in the meeting and in my conversations with the manager, this is not meant to be a process by which we say good job or bad job. This is really meant to be an opportunity for us to provide feedback and, you know, be constructive and, and, you know, have a conversation between city manager and us so that we can continue developing processes and, and, you know, everything, policy that we need in our city to, to better provide for our, our residents. So we are going to have a number of meetings coming up. I don't have the list in the committee report, but we'll make sure to share those out with folks as they come up, where we are going to be discussing the feedback that we receive, giving final ratings for the city manager, and then finally approving the report. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out. I'm happy to set up meetings, find time with anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to unfinished business, we only have one item under this section and I will just need one of my colleagues to accept and file.
The item of unfinished business before you is a communication that was received by the council at its last meeting from the Assistant Parking Clerk regarding agenda items approved at their April 1st meeting, specifically Agenda Item Two relating to the discontinuance of Merritt Road.
Move to adopt, is that what we need? Accept and file. Under communication, if there are no objections?
Seeing no objections, thank you, Counselor. Moving on to second reading.
Our first item under second readings, we have an order introduced by Councilor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 33B of Mass General Law, the sum of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars from fiscal year 25's Assessing Department Regular Salary Account is no longer needed and is hereby transferred in the amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars to fiscal year 2025 HHS Health Department Regular Salary Account.
Thank you, Clerk, is there a motion?
Move to a roll call vote, please.
Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes, vote to adopt. Councilor Tenary Garcia is absent. Councilor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Councilor Coopero.
Yes.
Councilor Taylor.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Councilor Tesh is absent. Councilor Kelly Garcia is absent. Councilor Sandig.
Yes.
Councilor Vega.
Yes.
Councilor Brown.
Yes.
And Councilor Daisos.
Yes.
Eight members voting in favor, zero opposed, three absent, order adopted.
Thank you, Clerk, on to the next item.
Next item under second readings, an order introduced by Councilor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, budget management procedures whereby costs incurred in FY24 and 23 were not paid and are owed to vendors. And to meet this obligation, funds are required from current year FY25 budget as noted. The Chelsea City Council hereby authorizes the following expenditures to satisfy unpaid balances that total three thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and eleven cents from prior years as follows.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Move to a roll call vote. Thank you.
Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes, vote to adopt. Councilor Tenary Garcia is absent. Councilor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Councilor Coopero.
Yes.
Councilor Taylor.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Councilor Tesh is absent. Councilor Kelly Garcia is absent. Councilor Sandig.
Yes.
Councilor Vega.
Yes.
Councilor Brown.
Yes.
And Councilor Daisos.
Yes.
Eight members in favor, zero opposed, three absent, order adopted.
Thank you, Clerk, moving on to the next one.
Next order introduced by Councilor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of Mass General Law, the sum of nine hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-four cents, representing unexpended portions of projects appropriated under fiscal years 2012 through 2019 capital improvement plans for projects as noted in the attached listing and which remain available after completion of the projects for which the funds were authorized and which are no longer needed to complete those projects, are hereby transferred in the amount of nine hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-four cents to CIP fiscal year 24 Downtown Broadway Water and Sewer Utilities Project.
Councilor Taylor.
Move to a roll call vote.
Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes, vote to adopt. Councilor Tenary Garcia is absent. Councilor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Councilor Coopero.
Yes.
Councilor Taylor.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Councilor Tesh is absent. Councilor Kelly Garcia is absent. Councilor Sandig.
Yes.
Councilor Vega.
Yes.
Councilor Brown.
Yes.
And Councilor Daisos.
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, three absent, order adopted.
Thank you, Clerk, moving on to new business.
First item under new business, order introduced by Councilor Taylor. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of two hundred thousand dollars from free cash to fiscal year 2025 Public Works Department Building Emergency Demo's Boarding Account for Forbes Site Receiver Ship Expenses.
Councilor Taylor.
Move to Ways and Means.
Seeing no objections, moving to Ways and Means, next item.
Next order introduced by Councilor Taylor. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of three thousand, three million one hundred seventy-two thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars from overlay surplus to Marginal Street Building Improvements Account for land and building enhancements, including funds for solar project.
Move to Ways and Means Committee.
Seeing no objections, moving to Ways and Means, on to the next item.
Order introduced by Councilor Taylor. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of fifty-three thousand dollars from free cash to fiscal year 2025 Executive Department's Conference Travel Account for All American City Award Conference Expenses.
Councilor Taylor.
Move to Ways and Means.
Ways and Means, no objections, moving on.
Order introduced by Councilor Taylor. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars from free cash to fiscal year 25 Inspectional Services Software License Account for implementation and subscription costs for ISD permitting and ticketing software.
Counselor.
Move to Ways and Means.
Seeing no objections, moving on.
Order introduced by Councilor Taylor. Whereas Green Roots, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to environmental justice in Chelsea and East Boston, seeks to provide the city with a five hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant for the Bear Park project. And whereas the city plans to develop a new park at 212 Congress Avenue named Bear Park. And whereas this parcel is heavily contaminated by formerly industrial use and remediation of costs exceed the project budget without this additional grant funding. And whereas the city seeks to ensure that this new open space serves the needs of all residents, providing shade, cooling opportunities, and opportunities for outdoor education. Now therefore be it ordered that by this vote, the Chelsea City Council formally accepts Green Roots dedication of five hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the city of Chelsea and authorizes the city manager to direct the funding to the Bear Park Development Program.
Thank you, Clerk, Counselor. Or is there a motion?
What's that?
This is the Green Roots.
Yeah, roll call. Yeah, roll, sorry, roll call, roll call vote on the adoption.
Okay, seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Roll call vote requested, yes, vote to adopt. Councilor Tenary Garcia, absent. Councilor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Councilor Coopero.
Yes.
Councilor Taylor.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Councilor Tesh is absent. Councilor Kelly Garcia is absent. Councilor Sandig.
Yes.
Councilor Vega.
Yes.
Councilor Brown.
Yes.
And Councilor Daisos.
Yes.
Eight members voting in favor, zero opposed, three absent, order is adopted.
Thank you, Clerk, moving on.
Next, order introduced by Councilor Taylor. Whereas Mystic River Waterset Association, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to advancing climate, education, climate resilience, and increased air and water quality work in the greater Boston area, seeks to provide the city with a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar reward for the removal of the Slade Mill Dam on Mill Creek and related improvements. And whereas since 2019, the Mystic River Waterset Association has supported the Housing and Community Development Department's efforts to increase public access to Mill Creek. And whereas the city seeks to partially remove Slade Mill Dam on Mill Creek to enhance the creek's suitability for recreational opportunities and increase habitat value. Now therefore be it ordered that by this vote, the Chelsea City Council formally accepts the Mystic River Waterset Association's dedication of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the city of Chelsea and authorizes the city manager to develop, direct the funding to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Clerk, is there a motion on the floor?
Move to a roll call vote.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes, vote to adopt. Councilor Tenary Garcia is absent. Councilor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Councilor Coopero. Councilor Taylor.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson. Councilor Tesh is absent. Councilor Kelly Garcia is absent. Councilor Sandig.
Yes.
Councilor Vega.
Yes.
Councilor Brown.
Yes.
And Councilor Daisos.
Yes.
Eight members voting in favor, zero opposed, three absent, order is adopted.
Thank you, Clerk, moving on to the next item.
We have an order introduced by the council president. Whereas it is the express purpose of municipal zoning to promote health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the city of Chelsea. And whereas a specific objective of the city of Chelsea zoning ordinance states the need to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the city of Chelsea. And whereas the planning board has submitted to the Chelsea City Council a proposed amendment to Section 34-106-J6 off-street parking requirements of the zoning ordinances of the city of Chelsea. Now therefore be it ordered that the following petition for the adoption of an amendment to Chapter 34, Article 5, Section 34-106, off-street parking requirements of the zoning ordinances of the city of Chelsea be reviewed and that a public hearing be scheduled to discuss the proposed zoning amendment pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40A. And be it further ordered that the petition be forwarded to the planning board of the city of Chelsea for a recommendation of the zoning amendment pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40A. The amendment reads as follows. Any relief from the number of required off-street parking spaces in the zoning ordinance shall disqualify that location from participating in the residential parking sticker program.
How does the council wish to proceed?
Move to adopt and schedule the zoning amendment hearing.
Refer to planning board.
Or planning board? Refer to the planning board.
Seeing no objections, thank you, Counselor. Moving on to the last item on the agenda.
Our final item under new business, order introduced by the council president. Whereas by Section 21 of Chapter 82 of Mass General Law as amended, it is provided that the Chelsea City Council may discontinue a public way. And whereas Merritt Road is a fifty-foot wide way between the Merritt Club and 121 Webster Avenue in Chelsea. And whereas the city administration has researched, determined, and recommended that Merritt Road is a paper road not used for travel and has become a nuisance for trash and debris and therefore should be discontinued as a roadway and deemed surplus property whereby making disposition appropriate, which is described on the attached survey plan. And whereas the city administration has filed a request to discontinue the paper road Merritt Road between Webster Avenue and Stockton Street. And whereas pursuant to Section 24-85 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea, both the planning board and the Traffic and Parking Commission have held public hearings and provided their respective recommendations to the city council. Now therefore be it ordered that pursuant to Section 24-85 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea and Section 21 of Chapter 82 of Mass General Law as amended, the Chelsea City Council formally discontinues Merritt Road between Webster Avenue and Stockton Street.
Thank you, Clerk, how does the council wish to proceed?
Move to adopt under, you know, a roll call vote.
Seeing no objections, moving forward with a roll call vote.
Yes, vote to adopt. Councilor Tenary Garcia is absent. Councilor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Councilor Coopero. Councilor Taylor.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Councilor Tesh is absent. Councilor Kelly Garcia is absent. Councilor Sandig.
Yes.
Councilor Vega.
Yes.
Councilor Brown.
Yes.
And Councilor Daisos.
Yes.
Eight members voting in favor, zero opposed, three absent, order is adopted.
Thank you, Clerk. Public announcements. Counselor Sandig.
Hi, yes, I have a couple. Tomorrow morning, along with the Mass Safe Roots for School, we're going to be doing a walk audit around Chelsea High School, so that we can assess what's working well in that area and what could be improved for the students who walk and bike to Chelsea High. So that's from 7:45 to 9:15. And the second announcement I have involves yet another tragic violent event in our city on Friday evening, Saturday morning, that involved the loss of life. And just to really address these issues and perhaps get some reassurances from the chief, we have scheduled a Subcommittee on Conference for June 3, where the chief and the Community Engagement Director, Dan Cortez, and two of the police captains will join the council, and we can just sort of get an idea of what's happening, especially as summer is coming up, and we know that that is traditionally an even more hectic violent time in urban areas. It's going to be on June 3 at 6:00, and of course, the public is welcome. Councilors will get an invitation soon. I'm also planning to have a meeting for my district, again, with members of the Police Department as I did last year, just to talk and hear about what kinds of things we're doing preventively, et cetera, so.
Thank you, Counselor. I'd like to just recognize also the leadership that you have had in your seat as Chair of our Safety Committee, and I am so grateful for your ongoing work. I'm telling you, this woman does not sleep, but very, very grateful that you are the one leading these efforts on that committee, and I look forward to this meeting. Counselor Taylor?
So I just wanted to remind everybody that the Chelsea Rotary Club is having our annual fundraiser on May 6, that's Tuesday, at Anthony's of Walden, and it is our annual Kentucky Derby event. It'll be very fun, chance to win some cash there, and, well, $500,000, $1,500, so.
Sounds good to me.
Tickets, tickets are $100, the meal is $60. We encourage everybody to come. It funds college scholarships for Chelsea students, and a lot of other things, you know, there's too many to list, I mean, but, you know, one of the things we've used money for recently is the help of fire victims that we have a fund for. So all of this, all of this helps our people in need in this city, so I encourage everybody to contact us if you want to go. The event is also listed on Facebook, so you can sign up there. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jimenez?
I have two, actually, three quick event announcements. The first on, and these are all happening on Thursday evening, so very busy evening on Thursday. The first is Green Roots is actually hosting a meeting at 6:00 PM in their office space with the Secretary of Transportation from the state to talk about the Tobin Bridge, you know, coming to its end of life and what we're going to do with it, and kind of, you know, starting those conversations early on. So if you're interested in what could happen in the Tobin Bridge space, please go to Green Roots Thursday at 6:00 PM. And then the other two events are both celebrating May Day, which is a, you know, International Workers' Day. We're celebrating workers and everything that they do for our community. So the first one is La Colaborativa, and the coalition that they are a part of regionally in Chelsea, East Boston, and Everett, is having an event at the Survival Center at 5:00. If our folks here have more information, please do share. And the second is, there is a National Day of Action event happening at the Bandstand at the Boston Common. I know many of us will be attending that as well, so if you're interested in any of that and joining us, please, please do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll just quickly add, I believe Darlene from the Greater Boston Labor Council will be shuttling folks from the Boston event to Chelsea as well, and so that's exciting to hear that these two events that happen annual will be happening. Of course, in Chelsea, we usually do a march. There will be no march this year, sorry, City Manager, I know you like to join those as well, but there will be tons of activities under the bridge, and so anyone who's interested, please reach out to La Colaborativa or join them under the bridge at the 63 Sixth Street location. Shout out to Charles once again on Sunday, amazing kickoff event. It was amazing to see the green giant, green monster on the field. I saw that our Counselor Leo Robinson was there, and I unfortunately could not attend, but my son had a blast. Want to also shout out our City Manager, our faith leaders. Saturday was a beautiful event that we shared here in our chambers with our youth and our community. Some of our counselors were able to join us, a lot of our school committee officials. Thank you all for joining, and just kudos to the faith community and our City Manager for putting all of that together, and, you know, rain or shine, that event just, it was beautiful. That is it, I believe. Anymore? No? Okay. Any moments of silence? Or, Councilor Vega? No? Okay. Moments of silence? Anyone?
Yeah, so I got one for a colleague who's always behind the scene. Some of you may not know that Richie's lost his mother, so we want to, some of you may not know that Richie lost his mother. Richie's one of our dedicated workers behind the scene to make sure that our mics are on and we're projected well out in the community from these deaths here, so my prayers and thoughts are with him and his family at this time.
I actually have four. One is, happens to be my cousin Bernie Saad Robinson, who owned a color circle in Boston who passed away. Also, Genevieve Burke, a longtime Chelsea resident who passed. People will know Kay Donovan, longtime Donovan family, and actually had the pleasure of working with Kay for 15 years at Pope John. She was the president of the school. And Vaughn Beruschin, whose family, lifelong Chelsea family, his brother George was my Chelsea High School teacher. He owns JB Insurance across the street. His brother Vaughn, who passed away, was a professor at Tufts, I believe.
Thank you all. Meeting adjourned.
Yeah.
[inaudible][1766.33]